Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting to order on 11/11/2024 at 6:34. We did have a need for executive session to cover student matters, personnel matters. And I believe that's the entirety.
The last.
Right, okay. Before we go into pledge, I do want to take a minute to thank all our veterans out there. Today's Veterans Day, and it's worth acknowledging and honoring those who've served our country dutifully and the sacrifices that they've made to keep our country safe. With that, I will turn to one of our own veterans and ask him to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Mr. Mumford, if you could take role, please.
Mrs. Bauer.
Here.
Mr. Beard.
Here.
Mrs. Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Galzella.
Here.
Mr. Gelsinger.
Here.
Mr. Leidy.
Here.
Mr. Plessig.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Weaver.
Here.
Nine presents, zero absence.
Thank you, Mr. Mumford. We have a few visitors here today. I have a short list of people signed in. Does anyone have additions, deletions, modifications to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll go on to hearings of persons who wish to address the board on agenda-related matters. Have no one signed in to do so? Is anyone present here wish to address the board on agenda-related items prior to our deliberations? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to 8A personnel. Mr. Smith.
It's a shorter one this week, but I'm making a motion to approve 8A 1 and 2.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Gelsinger. Any discussion? Mr. Beard.
Mr. Mumford, I just wanted to confirm that last spring with the budget for this current school year, we had budgeted for an additional seven PCAs.
Correct.
And I think at our last meeting when we approved the hiring or the creation of a new position that you had said that that is all seven now. So this one is number eight. This is the first one that we...
It says eight or nine. This might be the second one over.
Okay, okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Bauer.
Yes.
Mr. Beard.
Yes.
Mrs. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Gelsinger.
Yes.
Mr. Leidy.
Yes.
Mr. Plessig.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Weaver.
Yes.
Mr. Galzella.
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
8B. Mr. Plessig.
I'd like to make a motion for 8B 1.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Plessig, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Beard.
Yes.
Mrs. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Gels... Mr. Gelsinger.
Yes.
Mr. Leidy.
Yes.
Mr. Plessig.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Weaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Bauer.
Yes.
Mr. Galzella.
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
All right, on to 8BA.
So, Mr. Osborne, you want to take the lead on that one?
Yes, thank you. So this evening, we have Crabtree Werbeball here this evening to present to the board the process for the feasibility study. We felt that was an important first step so that everybody's has a common expectation understanding where we're at, where we're headed, and how we get there. I'm going to take a second and just kind of put a little context and perspective to this so that you can understand our timeframe that we're working to. I think the whole board acknowledges that based to some of the reconfiguration that we had to do at our elementary schools, there was concern, you know, are elementary schools, are they overcapacity, at capacity? Are we meeting our programming needs? I mean, I think that's where the desire for this feasibility study originated. It ties in well with the timing with our long-range planning where we attempt to renovate and update a building every four years because Park Hills is right in line with that. So between those two needs, I see this as coming together as a good coincidence in time to approach both of those concerns. But if we back it up to the point that we want to get each of our buildings updated and renovated every four years, Park Hills Elementary School, we had plans created. We were in the construction process in the year 2000. So this is 2024. We're already at the 24-year point, so we're going to be a year behind best-case scenario. We already started the school year with concerns about and having to redistrict elementary schools. That was the other part of the concern that triggered this feasibility study. So kind of what I wanted to touch upon on is that we go through this process with the feasibility study with Crabtree Werbeball. Our goal is to bring that to a conclusion, to a recommendation to the board by March at the latest, giving the board the ability then to make the best decisions direct going forward from there. I would anticipate that that's going to mean some type of project. We know Park Hills is at that point where we need to be addressing it. We know that we have some other concerns as far as capacity and direction with our elementary buildings and educational programming in general. So we would assume at that point, after the feasibility study is concluded, we would authorize and award an architecture firm to move forward with the design process as to what that project looks like. So assuming that we get that started by April, May of next spring, '25, we go through at least a nine-month design process, takes us up to December of '25, January '26. The bid process is another two months until we advertise, get it out to bid, solicit bids, evaluate bids, and actually sign contracts. So that's putting us late into the spring of '25 before we can even start construction. From there, we want two summers and a school year to do an elementary building. It's a quicker turnaround than what we have in the middle school, the high school, but you can see that takes us right up to the fall of 2027. And I think it's all the board's desire to probably bring this next step in district facilities to a head by the spring of 20... or the fall of 2027 for the school year. With it being an elementary school, it's not going to serve us well if that project trails out and doesn't finish until November, December. We're not going to send children to a different building mid-school year. We're not going to look at realigning anything. So I just wanted to take that second and kind of introduce what I envision kind of the steps of this process is. On a bigger scale, Crabtree is going to speak to us tonight on the initial first phase of this feasibility study and that process. But I just wanted to reinforce, it's pretty important that we kind of stick to the timeline, stick to the time, the assignments, you know, what we're considering, what we're given directive on so that we can move expediently toward that final direction. Because like I said, I'm really reacting to the fact that I feel like, hopefully I'm not reading the board wrong, but I think we really want to have this next step done for August of 2027. So with that, if you have any further questions, I'm going to turn it over to John Bedea and Scott Cousins from CRA. They've already started on this process, but we thought it was important to get them in here and explain the process.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be back in front. A lot of new faces, particularly ours, I suspect. My name is John Bedea. I'm a managing partner and architect with Crabtree Werbeball. Been with the company a little over 32 years. Scott Cousin, also principal with the firm and architect, turning 20... Not turning 20, at the firm. He's not 20. At CRA, 20 years. There's a compliment for you. So as Nate said, I think tonight what we want to talk about is fairly high-level process. And again, the end goal of a facility study is to give the board the information to make the decision on how you decide to move forward or the rationale, whether it be the public, the budget, the expenditure, the scope of the project. Those are really all the parts of the study. And as we go forward, we want to just talk a little bit about who we are as a firm. So we're a little over 80, 85 people headquartered out of Mechanicsburg. Our focus has been since 1985, really K-12 architecture. We've done a significant amount of projects in the tri-state area. And again, our expertise falls in a K-12 segment and try to focus on a client-oriented approach, which is a takeaway for you as the client. The study should answer the questions and also address things that you are all being approached at, whether it's through the public or interactions to describe the rationale for how you choose to move forward. Internally, these are all the services on the upper left that we have in-house. Obviously, architecture, interior design, code review and code compliance will be done within. We're going to talk a little bit about the plan con process, even though the state's not reimbursing. That's still a good model to follow. How you wish to engage the community, we'll partner in that as well. Security, management, construction, administration, and then coordination of all the other consultants. There'll be engineering involved that will provide some insight to cost and the scope of work and what the recommended improvements are. So essentially, the takeaway is that we are kind of the keeper of all the information that will flow through us to streamline that process. Just within the last 10 years, again, since our focus has been K-12 architecture, we've completed over 200 facility studies. While grants were being funded, the DCED grant is that second characteristic that hasn't been funded in the last year or two. But we were able to help districts achieve a little over $23 million in grant money, which was better than the Department of Education money that came over the life of the borrowing. So this DCED grant, if it opens back up, we've had a lot of success with that. On the far right, the other thing that I want to point out is since the mid-'90s, when the Department of Education was tracking all new school construction throughout the entire state of Pennsylvania, it was common that for that entire span that Crabtree and Associates had, in some cases, the first, the second, and/or the third lowest cost per square foot schools being built in the state. And what that translates to you is a cost-effective design, which is the way we design our school buildings, while a lot of other architects have a very different approach and complex structural systems and so forth. That translates to meeting your program and meeting your budget and not having to sacrifice those items. So we're very confident of that as well. Next, I'll turn it over to Scott to talk a little bit about the study process. And again, I think if there's an opportunity to have questions, if there's specific areas, you'll see us touch on a lot of these various things throughout every phase. But if there's a specific area of interest or concern, that's what we're here to do and listen to tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, so this is kind of overview of the whole process. And you'll notice it's very linear and it's purposeful that way. You know, as Mr. Osborne mentioned at the beginning, we might have some ideas of where we want to do projects in the end, but we want to let the study process tell us that, tell us the goal in the end. So it starts with, first, you want to define your goals, see where you're going. We gather some information, we analyze the data, determine the needs. Once we determine the needs, at that point, we can kind of develop the options. So we might have it in the back of our mind, some options that we want to develop. But until we really analyze that data and determine the needs is when we develop that. Then kind of developing a recommendation consensus. And as John said, we'll bring all the information to you so you can know costs, information, capacity, educational program, how well does certain options do one thing or the other. But in the end, it'll be, you know, your decision to make, to decide what's best for the community. So go to a little bit more detail of each of these steps. So once again, defining the goals at the beginning, we want to make sure we're on the same page with what are the financial constraints? Where are we going in the future? What are we trying to address with the educational program? What does the enrollment picture look like? What other goals do you have that you want the study to tell you the answers to? So that'll be one of the key steps that we work with the administration to determine upfront. The information gathering, which we kind of already undertaken and began the process. So one of the big components is going to be looking at the demographic and the enrollment data of the district from the historic point of view. We've gathered the first round of enrollment data. We're getting a little bit more detail into that data. And that'll probably be one of the first kind of data dumps or presentations that we'll give of that analysis. But understanding the demographics of the district, the different sectors of the district, the different municipalities, certainly population of the district itself, and different financial information. Existing building utilization. So we've kind of had a part in every building within districts. So we're very familiar with the buildings. However, as you know, things change over the years. Special education needs change over the years. So right now, your principals are looking at each of their buildings and defining how they use each of the spaces. Well, you'll see how that ties in later when we determine the capacity. So we're just documenting how you currently use each of the spaces. We're also going to talk about the educational program, another thing that constantly involves over the years. So we'll go into with the elementary, especially certainly we've done a project here recently at the middle school, and we're finishing up one at the high school. So those more likely align with your educational goals, but we'll look to focus in on the elementary needs and determine, you know, general classroom use. What are the special education needs? What are your specials? How well does the gymnasium or stage, every component of the building, how well does that meet your educational program needs? And kind of document that with the administrative staff. And that's going to be the baseline for our needs assessment when we look at what are the needs for each one of your buildings. So once we have all that data, we're going to begin our analyzation of it. So this starts with, this isn't your projection, but we'll do some sort of projection analysis that'll look at your past three years, your past five years. Department of Education also does enrollment projections. We'll use their enrollment projections as well. We'll look at how their projections have changed over the years. Then we'll also look at, and we'll use the average of those to determine a line, what we call a line of best fit. We'll also bring in a lot of other data, like we understand that there's uniqueness of your district, having some influx from Maryland as a lot of bordering districts deal with. New housing starts. We'll talk to each of the municipalities and understand what's currently on the books when be able to decipher, you know, what has been talked about for 10 years versus what's actually being built. And we'll extrapolate that into actual students per household. We'll look back at the pandemic, see how you guys came out of that from an enrollment standpoint and what impacts there. And then also tie in the whole attendance boundaries. We understand you recently redid those attendance boundaries. So how does that affect the projections at each of the elementary schools? Certainly, any questions along the way, feel free to stop. And then I mentioned, so your principals are doing the current utilization of space. We'll take that and then extrapolate what does that mean for capacity of the building? So at the elementary level, each, essentially each one of your classrooms, general classrooms, has a PDE, Department of Education, capacity of 25 students per classroom. So we'll be able to use those building maps to determine the capacity. We'll also look at what the district goals are. You know, everywhere we go, you don't want to put 25 kids in a kindergarten classroom. You know, go ask a kindergarten teacher. She'll tell you why. So you might have different class size goals. So we'll look at how those class size goals affect the capacity of each of your buildings. We'll factor in some efficiency and plant... Efficiency and utilization rates, meaning if you have 100 kids in a building or the building has 100 student capacity, you're not going to be able to split the students up 25, 25, 25. So you might have some bubble, you might have some bubble grades come through. So we put some efficiency factors in there to help handle those diversities. And then we'll generate a capacity for each of the buildings and then analyze that against, what does that look like for your current enrollment? But also, what does that look like for your future enrollment of the projections that we do? And we'll always look at a five-year window. You know, for future enrollment, anything past five years is going to be unreliable. So we're going to focus on that five-year window for enrollment capacities, enrollment projections. So we'll compare the educational program that you gave us, that we'll develop with your staff, to how well each of the buildings meet that educational program. Is it a matter of, you know, do we have enough quantity? Do you have enough size? Are you, you know, are you having, you know, an itinerant specialist teach out of a closet? Or are you in the inverse? Do you have a classroom that is sized for 25 students only being used for, you know, a reading specialist that might have five students? So we'll look at both sides of the story, see how well the building meets those needs. And you can see here, you know, in this diagram, you know, the kind of the upper floor plan or the upper image is kind of things in the past. That's how you used to teach and, you know, everything was teach to the masses. Now it's a lot more individualized. You have individualized learning that might need more breakout space, more small group instruction. So how well do the buildings meet that, meet your current and future educational needs? And then we'll also use that as a, once again, develop that needs assessment and say, all right, well, we're short a STEM space or the STEM space we're using is too small. We'll develop a program for each of your buildings that'll say, here's what we need to do to meet that program. Along with Mr. Osborne, we'll go through and look at the existing infrastructure of each of the buildings. So it'll be the site, the exterior envelope, the systems, the building finishes. And Mr. Osborne already has, he's on top of a lot of that and already has very developed kind of master plan of things that need upgraded, which helps us do our job better. We appreciate that. So this is where we bring in our engineers, we'll walk the buildings and determine of all your existing, you know, walls, windows, doors, HVAC systems, lighting, what needs upgraded to current standards? And once again, this all ties back to PD's requirements for a facility study. They want to know what does it take to get the building up to today's standards? We'll take all those components and determine what needs upgraded and then put a cost to it. So this will be kind of separate from the educational program. It'll be of everything you have existing, what needs upgraded and what does it cost to do that? And then that kind of brings all the head, all the things that we'll identify from a needs assessment standpoint, and then we can begin developing the options. So once again, you have your facility needs, from your infrastructure, your systems, any code items, any deferred maintenance. You have your educational program needs. You have your space needs from a capacity standpoint that'll all determine how do you, what options do we develop to satisfy those needs? And once again, this is district-wide. You're in a good spot as a district. You've stayed on top of your project. So once again, at the secondary level, there's not going to be much need that's going to come out of that. There might be a little things here and there that have changed over the years since we've done the project here. Certainly, your needs are being met at the high school with the current project. But this will primarily, once again, be focused on the elementary. And then as John mentioned earlier, we're very honed in on cost-effective design, you know. So all of our solutions are going to factor in not only all the different needs of educational enrollment-driven capacity, but they're all going to be cost-conscious. And the options that we develop are going to be centered around that. Because in the end, we're talking, you know, we want facilities that are going to last long, that are going to be easily maintained, durable, and meet the educational needs of the district. But at the same time, these are taxpayer dollars, so we want to be sensitive to that. So that's kind of at the core of our design philosophy of that cost-effective design. So schedule. You heard Ms. Osborne talk a little bit about that. So here's kind of how each of those pieces of the timeline fit in. November, we're defining the goals. We've already begun the information gathering back in October, actually. We're going to roll that into December and then analyze the data. The information that I kind of just gave a very high-level overview will get very detailed. So we certainly don't want to overwhelm you with everything at once. So we're going to use the first meeting in December to go through. Most likely, it'll be the enrollment piece. It'll be the capacity piece. And then come back in January to review the educational needs and the cost to upgrade. And then by that point, we'll kind of identify all the needs. We can have kind of a discussion about, hey, here's some ideas that we're thinking about for some potential options. We'll get some input from the board. And then from there, we'll begin developing the options through January. Come back in February with the options developed, with the costs associated with them, floor plans that you'll see what they look like and how they meet the needs with some pros and cons of each of them. And then, you know, if we need to go back and develop anything else, we could do that quickly if we need to hit another meeting in February. But the idea, once again, we'll try to hit that March deadline, get a stakeholder consensus so that we can certainly hit your overall schedule, trying to occupy whatever you do in 2027. So a lot of information there. Once again, next steps, I kind of hit on those already. Enrollment capacity in the building surveys and the programming. That's what we will focus on here till the end of the year. Questions?
Yeah, question, comment about building capacity. I'm sure I don't have to tell you this, but I want to make it very clear. One of the issues that we're having going forward, and I think it's only going to escalate, is a point that you mentioned special education a couple of times, and you also mentioned putting small groups in a large classroom. Those are what we're going more and more, we're seeing in the future. So there's limits to the capacity that you can put for special education, and we're using large classrooms for a few students. And I think that's only increasing exponentially.
Yeah, and certainly...
I want to make sure we're looking at that.
It's a challenge that everyone faces, you know, as you have these different needs arise. These buildings were built, you know, however many years ago where you didn't have a reading specialist and you didn't have an ESL teacher and, you know. So you're kind of, you know, making do with what you have, but that doesn't mean you can't come in and split a classroom into two and make it, yeah.
Exactly. And then another thing that I really like is West Mannheim has more of a community area for their kindergarten classroom. I'd like to see that more of our elementary schools. I think it's very beneficial from talking with the kindergarten teachers, you know, things like that. So I'm not sure what recommendations you've been getting from who you've been talking to recently, but I just think that's something we ought to look at for the rest of our elementaries as well.
Yeah, it's finding a comparable application of every time a district does a project, there's a new perspective that you're trying to address. Then how do you implement that district-wide is another carryover. But the change in special education has become quite vivid with all the districts we're working with. This, your problem is not unique. Every district is struggling with how many more professional staff needs to be hired to support the students. And the space isn't designed for that, which is why we showed that one graphic. I think there's a misconception of that translates to new construction. It might not. That is the same floor plan repurposed to try to be more flexible with different class sizes, so.
Yeah, Mr. Leidy covered the same point I wanted to make with... And I just want to reiterate, as we've seen them mentioning nationally, the rates of autism and special education are increasing dramatically. And I think that's something that we should be examining when we try and determine how many special education spaces we need, especially considering in our last redistricting, there are legal limits of how much space per child we have to, and I'm sure you gentlemen are aware of that. And that's some of the problems we ran into at West Mannheim that I do think we could plan for to have effectively the same floor plan. We could have four classrooms to handle what we've filled one classroom with and left the leftover unused space. So you spoke to that when you talked to proper class sizing, and I appreciate that. I also want to reiterate the talking with the municipalities you mentioned. I think that's really important because they do have their thumb on the heartbeat of how much housing is coming in here. And those township managers know better than anybody exactly what's going in. So I really, I appreciate you guys already stating that we're going to do that. I think that's really important to knowing exactly how much housing we have coming in and what kind of housing we have. And lastly, if we could get this presentation, which has the calendar and whatnot on it, I think that would be helpful to the board. Okay, great. That's all I had. Anyone else? Okay, thank you for thorough insight.
We'll be back. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks again, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And our next part is E B B, which is Mr. Mummer, whenever he's ready.
All right, so as part of the process of going through the feasibility study, I wanted to bring to the board's attention some information regarding the district's long range capital plan. And you have a large packet in front of you, 47 pages. No, it's not true, I don't get paid by the page. It's just, it's just a myth out there. But I'm going to boil this three-hour presentation down to about 10 minutes. I have my page and a half talking points, so we're not going to go through every page. But we are going to go over the information so that you can take it back with you, look through it. And then at the next meeting, we can have a greater discussion on it. Because I don't expect you to have it all read and be prepared for it to the seating. So the first thing I'm going to say is no decisions are required tonight or expected. Again, we're represented tonight, going to show you what the packet is, what you're looking at. And then at the December 11th committee of the whole meeting, we'll put a segment in that meeting for questions and further discussion. So if you want to go down Doug to the next page. So the first part of the handout is, the first five pages is executive summary. And that's what Doug is scrolling through right now. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the executive summary after I go through just the general overview of the document. And this document will also be posted on our website tomorrow. Right there, the second section starts on page six. It's a one-page document that shows the construction cost estimates that have been developed by Nate based on the actual square footage, construction costs of projects that have been bid out this past summer in this area. And they are adjusted forward using a 3% inflationary factor on an annual basis. So we know if we're looking at Park Hills, that's going to be done potentially in two years from now. If you look at like West Mannheim, those renovations were scheduled for several years out further. We have to add in inflationary costs because we know that those costs are going to continue to rise. Page seven is a summary of the borrowing cost estimates based on eight options. We generated eight options, these are just options we came up with. And this is just a summary of those options and the cost impact, the millage impact of those options, depending upon which option you select. This is going to be one of the areas that we'll be able to focus on and be able to hone in on when we talk about options moving forward. It's just a one-page snapshot, I think it looks easier that way to see. Pages nine through 25 are the actual cost estimate, you want to stop there a second Doug? The actual cost estimates that we developed. Now, the first page, which is page nine, you can see on your document and you can see on the board, we have essentially two different sections, a right and a left-hand section. What they're showing is projected assessments for the district based upon assessment increases. And we used as our variables, 2% increase in years one through five, 1.9% increase year six through 10, 1.8% in 11 through 15, 1.7%, 16 and 20 drops down to 1.6 and 1.5. We have it declining down because eventually we know that we're going to build out our land. And as that happens, I suspect our assessed value increases will go up at a smaller, smaller rate. So even though we're showing a 2% now, which is pretty close to what our average has been for the last five years, I do expect over time that will start to diminish. It also shows on there the current millage we have in place dedicated for debt service, which is 2.64 mils. And it has that going out into the end or to the bottom of the sheet. We estimate a collection ratio for budget purposes of 96%. If you look over to the right, it's 96.8%. And then we have the value of the mill and how much that generates in column F, as far as tax revenue dedicated for debt service. That column F numbers are going to translate over to future pages, if you want to go down to the next page, Doug. So, and this is going to be the first option. You'll notice the options are labeled at the top, top center it has option one. And there are two pages for each option. So the first page option looks like this. And what this shows you is every year's debt payments projected out for the various projects, for the various amounts that we gave to our finance team in order to give us cost estimates. So for example, we know we have to do a $15 million borrowing here in '25 to finish out the high school project. So here you see that potential cost under column J. K would be if we did Park Hills, we're projecting it to be about $34 million. M would be a West Mannheim, that's about $37 million. So you can see how that goes across. So that's, every, every option is going to have a page like that. There's more empty columns, the empty columns are because we're also looking at the potential for having either one bond issue per project or two bond issues per project. So you can either split it up or have it in one shot. If you look at the bottom of the page, then you'll see at the bottom, you have the total cost for those bond issues. Because the bond issue is not only the principal, it's not only the 30, the $15 million you see up there, but the interest adds up to 24 million. So you can see what those cost impacts are, the interest impacts are for the term of the actual bond. If you go to the next page, Doug, again, at the top, you'll see option one. So that's how you keep these options together. If you look at the book, the two pages for each option are in the same page. So we have it so you can see the whole option at one opening, if you would. And this is where you get that, the dollar amount that comes over for payment of debt. That's the column Y that you see here, dedicated millage numbers. And you can see the total net debt under column W. And so you can sort of see the differences under Z, the amount available for additional debt or transfer into long range capital plan. Now, column Z is going to be one of our key columns. Because when you look at our long range capital plan, the way it's worked in the past is if there's any difference between the amount of millage that we have dedicated to debt service compared to what that generates compared to what our net debt cost is, that difference, if there is a positive difference, has been transferred over into our long range capital plan, capital reserve account. Those years, it's a negative, obviously, we're not transferring because it's negative. And you can see we've had positive numbers the last few years. That number's been coming down because of the high school project, we're phasing in millage to cover the high school project. And you see that that millage goes down to where it becomes negative. This year, I'm sorry, next year, 24, 25, 25, 26, 25, 26, next year it becomes negative, this year it's still positive. But that's why we're going to be talking about, the reason for bringing this before the board's, the board's attention, or to the board's attention is, in order to go forward with other projects, under funding projects, further renovations or construction projects, we're going to need to increase taxes in order to pay for that. We're not going to have the capacity and here to do that. If you look over under column B B, that shows you the cost of the projects that we're looking at. And under C C, it tells you what building that we're looking at. And then over under D D, it has the difference in millage. And that's an important column because what that shows you is, okay, if we want to pay for Park Hills, what's that going to cost us? Well, under this scenario, under this option, it's approximately one point, I can't read that, 2, 4, 1, something like that. I can't see that number as much. Well, that's only in year one. No, the total cost would be somewhere in the neighborhood of, yeah, well, that's going to be further down. So, but you can see what the cost impact is, the millage. And what I look at is when you get out here to whatever the highest year is of your debt service, which is again under column W, you know, when you're looking at this one, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about 16 million, is that right? So 16 million, what that costs is, is what you're going to need to have as far as millage in place in order to be able to pay for that cost. And that's also keep in mind with the increasing assessments that we've calculated. So we have eight options in here, so you'll see 16 pages of these back to back in pages nine through 25. Then we're going down to page 26 through 33. And when you saw part, the first page of all these options, those are actual financing estimates that were provided to us by our finance team, specifically public financial management. And we've provided for you those exact numbers that they provide to us for each of these projects. And some of them, again, you're going to see options that are going to have one borrowing, like this one you have on page 26. Other options, you're going to see two columns for each of those projects, like you see right here. Thank you, Doug. So those numbers tie into what we put into the cost options that we have in our spreadsheet that you saw just previously. So we want to show you these detail sheets as well, showing you where the numbers are coming from. I think it's always important to know where the data is coming from. We're not just making up these numbers, these numbers are coming from them. Now, keep in mind, they are finance people, they're going to be making these assessments years out. I'm sure that they're putting in interest rates that they believe are going to be reasonable. So these are probably on the conservative side. So what's that mean? Well, it means when we finally get around to borrowing these monies for these projects, it wouldn't surprise me if we don't come in at $25,000 per year lower than what these numbers are. Now, yeah, that's great, but it's not going to move the needle when it comes to taxes. It's, it's going to probably be lower than these, we just don't know how much. And again, the further out you go, the more variables there are, the more uncertainty there is. All right, then we go to page 34 through 43. And this is just a revision of our long range capital plan, which is what we put into effect years ago. This is the sixth reiteration of that. And what this gives you is terms that we talk about when we talk about borrowing bonds or doing bond issues, like level debt service, wraparound debt service. I'm not going to read them all for you, but there's a whole bunch of terms in there. It also goes into the actual outstanding debt the district has now. It tells you what the money was borrowed for, several of these have been refunded over the years. And it just gives you a sort of a history of our debt. Some of the debt that you'll see here in the history has been paid off, the 14 issues paid off, the 15 issues paid off. We're now up to 18A, that's the most current or the last lease that we have that is still on our books. And that's the last one we have, we're actually receiving plan con reimbursement for from the state. You'll see that on page 44 and 45. The original board resolution, which authorized us to have the long range capital plan.